At this time, I'd like to call to regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for May 6, 2014, 5:00 PM the order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose no. Motion carries. Item 2A, Public Hearing on the Proposed 2014 Surface Restructure Project. Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing on the proposed 2014 Surface Reconstruction Project. This project would be reconstruction of city streets by the street department forces or city forces. The location consists of six blocks of Fort North between Broadway and Garden and also six blocks of 11th North from Broadway and Garden for a total of 12 blocks or approximately a mile. The estimated cost of the project is just over $516,000. We're expecting this as just under $100,000 or $1,350 per parcel. I think there was about 73 parcels abutting these particular improvement areas. So with that, you could open it up for comments. I did not receive any written comments.
It's a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard or have any comments on it?
You want to take one at a time maybe?
We can, well, we'll take 11th North, Broadway to Garden. Nobody? Fort North, Broadway to Garden. See none? Anybody in the council?
It's pretty standard to me. I'll offer a motion to offer the resolution waived reading, close the hearing and order the 2014 Surface Reconstruction Project and authorize the street department to get to work.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading, approving it. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher, oh, sorry. Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item 3A, Consider Motion Approving Issuance of a Temporary On-Sale Liquor Permit for the Gustown Roller Girls.
I'll offer that motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to approve the liquor permit for the Gustown Roller Girls. It's for Saturday, May 31st and July 6th and September 20th. Any comments? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 3B, Consider Motion Approving Issuance of a Fireworks License for Dollar Tree Number 3487.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 3C, Consider Motion Approving a Temporary 3.2% Malt Liquor License for Coalition for Clean Minnesota River.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Just regarding the River Blast celebration on Friday, August 29th and the 30th of August.
Lot of fun, beautiful day.
Usually is.
Usually is.
Any more discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 3B, or 3D, Consider Motion Approving Issuance of a Temporary On-Sale Intoxicating Liquor License for the Bavarian Blast.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, that was for July 17th through July 20th.
Another fun event.
Yes. See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 4A, Number One, Consider Resolution Approving Request from Scott Krueger on behalf of Bondo Incorporated for a simple lot division of the property at 304 through 1216th South Street.
I'll offer the resolution waived reading.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
This came before the Planning Commission at their last meeting and it was indeed considered a simple lot division. So there were really not, no issues and no, you know, nothing too out of the ordinary to discuss.
We're approving this with the conditions.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4A, Number Two, Consider Resolution Approving Request from Garrett Meyer for a simple lot division of the property located at 901 South Valley Street.
I'll offer the resolution waived the reading approving with the conditions, the request for a simple lot division.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading. Any more discussion?
Well, again, this came before the Planning Commission and it seemed like there were no real issues. It was just a simple, simple lot division.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4A, Number Three, Consider Resolution Approving Application for James Crutch Requesting a Conditional Use Permit to Allow Apartment Building to be Located on the Property Zone 3B, or B3, General Business District at 123 South Minnesota Street.
I'll offer the resolution waived the reading approving with conditions, applicant by Mr. Crutch.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading. Any discussion?
Well, this came before the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission went over the various items that are needed to allow this conditional use permit and determined that everything was met. Basically, I think if you took a look at it, the difference between this, this request and the earlier request is that the applicant has purchased more property and is going to be, you know, moving the apartment further south. So there wasn't, it didn't seem to be any reason to deny the request for a conditional use permit.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I see we have Mr. Crutch in the audience. If anybody's got questions for him, I'm sure he'd stand up.
And they...
It looks pretty standard.
And I was just wondering if we had any additional information on the sale of the city property? If we were, ask the city manager if we have any information about where the project stands as far as the soil testing and that sort of thing?
Sure. The city had contracted with a firm to come out and do testing of the soils that are assumed to have some sort of contamination. I think it was determined that the contamination is relatively small. It's made up of two different products. One is gasoline, maybe at some time, maybe somebody's gas tank leaked or something. And the other item deals with dry cleaning chemicals and both are relatively small. We have now submitted information to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency regarding that. We'll see how that plays out as to what needs to be done. It could range from being a very simple, if you don't find anything when you dig for your footings and you don't agitate it, just leave it be because there's no drinking water coming out of that area. Or it could go to the fire extent, which we've seen in other situations where you have to remove all the contaminants.
All the contaminants.
So we're in the process of determining what's going to be required and so we'll have to go through that process. In addition, I think there's some paperwork that has to be done, put together, a plan needs to get put together as to, let's say they're digging footings and they come across the barrel. What are you going to do? So before that happens, we have to have a plan in place for the contractor to then say, okay, Plan Three as we deal with that in this, in this manner. So a little bit of paperwork needs to be done so we know what we're, you know, what we have to do and we're in the process of doing that.
And understanding that we're dealing with another agency, do we have any kind of timeline that we're looking at?
We're dealing with the MPCAs timeline.
Okay.
So to the extent that we can expedite it, you know, that will be our efforts.
Okay.
There's one of the questions as well, once, if the soil is contaminated, where does it go? Where do we put the soil? Because we've got to dig the hole anyway, or the developer's got to dig the hole anyway and get rid of the soil.
Well, I think...
If some of it's contaminated, I suppose that has to go...
I think it depends on where the footings go. If you don't dig in the area that's contaminated, it could just sit there. Because it's, if it's not spreading, it doesn't do anything, you know? So those things still have to get worked out. I know, you know, the current plan that we're talking about, the conditional use permit here, is moving the building further south, which is actually away from one of the sites.
Yeah.
So the depth of the contamination versus the depth of the footings is also, comes into play. So there's a lot of details that have to get really hammered out before we can know for sure. And we've had discussions with Mr. Crutch, we've had discussions with our consultant and we're, you know, on the path to get to that final decision. And hopefully it's not too far down the road.
Right.
Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 4A, Number Four, Consider Resolution Approving Application from Josh Lunenburg on behalf of New Ulm Steel and Recycling Incorporated requesting a conditional use permit to place a 12-foot fence, or 12-foot high fence on a property generally located at 21819 South Street.
I'll offer the resolution waived the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading. Any discussion?
Do you want to comment?
Well, you go ahead.
I just had a couple of questions being for Josh if he, back when I was on the Planning Commission, you were, we're talking about building a smaller fence back then and you brought some metal and that was what you were going to use to construct. Is that kind of what you're still thinking?
Exactly. It's going to be just whole barn.
Whole barn steel.
So the seams out of whole barn.
And then it said two-by, or wood, wood post that'll hold that fence in place.
Correct.
Okay. And what is that going to be made of?
Wood. Just treat it wood.
Just treat it wood. Okay. I think that's, I was just curious if it was the same fence that you and I had saw when you brought it in front of us before.
Correct. Nothing's changed since then besides the height.
Okay.
Okay. And this did come before the Planning Commission and it was coming for the second time, so there wasn't that much discussion. I guess the first time when Commissioner Schultz was on, it was a lower fence. But, you know, we considered that a business defined as a junkyard generally are screened from public view. We'd, we've previously granted conditional use permits for higher fence in this area and, and there's adequate distance between the fence and the bike trail. And, you know, there's a number of, you know, this is all part of a regular plan. We've got clear zone things and, you know, there's a number of other conditions and so, including the maintenance of the fence and that sort of thing. So the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Do you know what your timetable is for installation once it's approved?
Construction season this year. Nothing's been planned because I don't want to plan anything until we have approval. So construction season this year, so before...
Before the snow flies.
Yes. But hopefully sooner.
Let's don't use that term before the snow flies. Put that into being.
We just got rid of the snow, I know. I know, I know.
We're only in the first part of May.
I know. That's true.
Quiet.
And I know our goal for this whole project is hopefully to reduce some of the noise. We know that it's not going to reduce all the noise. To help with complaints of people seeing piles of steel and that kind of thing, also maybe some dust reduction potentially as well. So it's kind of a best win situation for all parties in my opinion.
Well, and just to, just a reminder for everybody that the, you know, there's a portion of South German Street that is not, you know, fully completed and so Mr. Lunenburg will be consulting with the city engineer's office about, about the fence and the eventual completion of German Street. Is that right?
Correct. There's a few end-to-endos, these are utilities that we need to, need to be addressed and the corner of what would be 19th for visual for, so, so there's not an impeachment of vision for, for traffic would be, but that's, particular is more than the real, the real scheme of the things here, but that will be addressed with the city.
Okay. All right, just so we're all on the same page. Okay, good. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. And Item 4B was eliminated, so we'll go on to Item 5A. Receive previously opened bids and consider awarding the contract for the 2014 Utility Street and Alley Improvements Group Run Project.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Anything from our engineer?
No, Mr. President. We got, we got two bids for our larger project this year. The low bid came in 13% under the engineer's estimate, so it was a very favorable bid to the city. We've, the low bid was MR paving and excavating from New Ulm. We had several projects with this particular firm and they always delivered good work, so I would recommend awarding the contract.
Any more comments? Total bid was $2,692,354.56. No more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 6A, Consider Resolution Approving Further Implementation of a Local Performance Measurement System Developed by the Council on Local Results and Innovation. Brian?
Yeah, Mr. President and City Council members, you've received the results of that survey in a past city council meeting. One of the requirements is if we want to do it next year, we adopt a resolution and that's what this is.
What if we don't want to do it next year?
What's that?
What if we don't want to do it next year?
Then we don't adopt the resolution.
Well, I think we talked a little bit about that last year.
It's pretty simple.
But it seemed to have some positive results on it.
Any more discussion?
Well, and I think the plus side is that the state reimburses us for our expenses on this, so it's, it's not a cost to the taxpayers and it's, its intent is, the results are to be used to help us budget our tax dollars in an appropriate fashion, the way the citizens want it, so.
And we've changed up the questions periodically, correct?
We've added more questions and put more in-depth data along with the questions. Like, they can rate the fire departments, you know, good to excellent, okay? But we've added things like response time to, you know, reflect, it's either going up or going down kind of thing, so you kind of know if they're, well, if the fires are real close, response time's going to be short, but you typically want response time, you know, to be fairly short, whether it's police or fire.
Right.
Any more comments? Now to entertain a resolution?
I'll offer the resolution waived the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution waived reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Webster.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6B, Consider Motion Approving Replacement Method for the Downtown Concrete Paver Sidewalk and, or Crosswalks and Sidewalk Inlay Brick.
This is, this is a two-part motion. Basically, we've got the crosswalks, which we found out that the bricks don't stand up to the snow plows and things of that nature. So we've gone and installed asphalt and then used 12-inch painted lines to delineate that crosswalk. The other section was we, we actually worked two different programs. The first program, we removed the bricks in the sidewalk and replaced it with a tan or a darker brown concrete mixture, which we got back in, the consensus of the council was that wasn't, that wasn't what we were looking to do. So we went, then went to normal concrete, gray, and we've, you see pictures that are attached to this. So that's what we'd be requesting from the council to continue on with the asphalt crosswalks and painted lines and to put the gray replacement concrete where the fancier brick inlays were...
Where the brown was.
Yeah. The brown, we're not going to cut the brown concrete out.
Right.
Just, just to replace it, but where you see the brown in front of City Hall, that's where, that's where the gray would continue to go in the rest of the downtown business.
Now, the brown just, that didn't work.
Didn't work.
That was ugly.
Besides that, in the wintertime, you get slippery with the snow and that on there, the brick and that. Yeah.
Any more discussion? See none? Entertain a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? That? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 6C, Consider Motion Instructing the City Manager to Designate a Certified Building Official for the City of New Ulm.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just, you know, from the city manager, when, if we could run down the current plan to, you know, fill these various positions and so we're up to speed as the construction season starts.
Sure. The department head level building official posting was made eight days ago. It'll be an internal posting to see if anybody within the organization has the prerequisite certifications to be a building official. Obviously, you'll see on the attach that Mr. Zabel has those because I'm, we're temporarily naming him for two days to be our, our building official and I, and I'm not going to predispose that he will be selected for the department head position, but it'll be dependent upon who all signs the posting and has the correct certification. So on the 8th, the posting will come down and then we'll address that position and then we'll have to open up a, the third position to fill that shortly.
Okay. And you're confident that we're going to have enough help this construction season?
I'm confident the staff will be capable of performing the duties required of them. And, you know, we'll have a fairly busy season, but we're recognizing that going in and, you know, some of the other things that we may have done in, in the summer will probably be set aside. The primary duties will be the, the building official activities that are going on. You know, we've got the rental inspections, we've got some other things that we do, but we'll try and do those in more downtime situations, not during the summer.
Okay.
So.
Probably still going to include some overtime in that department, I would guess.
It's very possible. It all just depends on how it all plays out and we have a few projects that are on the board that might go. If they don't go, that would take some pressure off, but if they do go, you know, I've been assured that we have the capabilities of getting the work done, but it might require some overtime.
All those apartment buildings getting built in town.
Yeah.
Well, and we're looking up, we're, you know, we're facing down the, I know you're planning budgets already too, so that's probably one of the things we've got to keep in mind. Good. Thank you.
Any more discussion? See none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Item 6D, First Reading of Ordinance Number 14-117, Fourth Series Amending Section 9.12 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm Relative to Noise Standards. Mr. Attorney, go for it.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 14117, Fourth Series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota. An ordinance amending Section 9.12 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm Relative to Noise Standards in Said City. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of New Ulm, Section 1. That subdivision 8B2 of Section 9.12 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm is hereby amended to read as follows. B, Standards. These standards describe, the noise. These standards describe the limiting levels of sound and are established on the basis of present knowledge for the preservation of public health and welfare. These standards are consistent with speech, sleep, annoyance and public and hearing conservation requirements for receivers within the district. The standards do not by themselves identify the limiting levels of impulsive noise needed for the preservation of public health and welfare. A, Definitions. The terms used in this subdivision have the meanings given them in this part. I, A-weighted means a specific weighting of the sound pressure level for the purpose of determining the human response to sound. The specific weighting characteristics and tolerances are those given in American National Standards Institute S1.4, 1983, Section 5.1, as now enforced or as hereafter amended, revised, or replaced by Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030. Number two, DBA means a unit of sound expressed in decibels, dB, and A-weighted. Number three, decibel means a unit of sound pressure level abbreviated as dB. Number four, impulsive noise means either a single sound pressure peak with either a rise time less than 200 milliseconds or total duration less than 200 milliseconds, or multiple sound pressure peaks with either rise times less than 200 milliseconds or total duration less than 200 milliseconds spaced at least by 200 millisecond pauses. Number five, L10 means the sound level expressed in DBA which has exceeded 10% of the time for a one-hour survey. Number six, L50 means the sound level expressed in DBA which has exceeded 30% of the time for a one-hour survey.
50%.
50%, I'm sorry. Number seven, person means any human being, any municipality or other governmental or political subdivision or other public department or agency, any public or private corporation or any partnership firm, association or other organization, any employee licensee, receiver, trustee, esteny, agency, legal entity other than a court of law or any legal representative of any of the foregoing. For eight, sound pressure level in decibels means 20 times the logarithm to the base 10 of the ratio of the pressure to the reference pressure. The reference pressure shall be 20 micro newtons per square meter. B, No person shall operate or cause or permit to be operated any source of noise in such a manner as to create a noise level exceeding the following limits. L50, 75. L10, 80. The following procedures must be used to obtain representative sound level measurements. I, Measurement of Sound must be made at a point of human activity which is nearest to the noise source. All measurements shall be made outdoors. Two, All sound level measuring devices must meet type O, 1, 2, or S specifications under American National Standards Institute S1.4, 1983, as now enforced or as hereafter amended, revised, or replaced by Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030. Number three, All sound level measuring devices must at a minimum be externally field-calibrated before and after monitoring using a calibration device of known frequency and sound pressure level. Four, Measurements must be made at least three feet off the ground or surface and away from natural or artificial structures which would prevent inaccurate measurement. Number five, Measurements must be made using A-weighting and fast-response characteristics of the sound measuring device as specified in American National Standards Institute S1.4, 1983, as now enforced or is hereafter amended, revised, or replaced by Minnesota Rules, Chapter 7030. Number six, Measurements must not be made in sustained winds or in precipitation which results in a difference of less than 10 decibels between the background noise level and the noise level being measured. Number seven... Number seven, measurements must be made using a microphone which is protected from ambient conditions which would prevent an accurate measurement. D, a summary sheet for all sound level measurements shall be completed and signed by the person making the measurements. At a minimum, the summary sheet shall include, I, the date, II, the time, III, the location, IV, the noise source, V, the wind speed and direction, VI, the temperature, VII, the humidity, VIII, the make, model, and serial number of measuring equipment, IX, field calibration results, X, monitored levels, and XI, site sketch indicating noise source, measurement location, directions, distances, and obstructions. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced 30 days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Do we have anything that relates to the frequency that the noise levels will be measured, not, I mean, at any location?
I'm sure you know what the question is. Do we have a piece of equipment that can measure?
No, do we have, in other words, do we have a schedule when these might be evaluated? Let's say that we have a business that sets up across the street. Okay, are we going to measure that on April 1st, August 1st, and whatever? Do we have any timeframe set up for any of these considerations?
My first response is we would only measure when they're in operation. So if April 1st was a defined date and they weren't operating, we wouldn't measure.
No, I understand that.
So I, it's my belief, I think, that we'll set that up should the council adopt. The ordinance will set up a schedule, but it won't be nearly defined as a specific date. I think it would be more defined as once every six months during operation, so that you have the ability to be flexible enough to show up when they're operating.
Because seasonality might play, have an impact on certain factors as well. So, I mean, you've got spring, summer, winter, fall and winter.
And potentially some complaints or new equipment or...
Yeah, we'll put together the guidelines.
Please do.
I mean, if the council adopts this at some future date, I, you know, I'll take the requirements that we have here and we'll contact our equipment suppliers and, you know, get the proper equipment, and then we'll set up a schedule if, you know, if it's not done by complaint, you know, at least over a period of time, so many times a year or something like that.
It should be done, yes, yeah.
Yeah. It's not, it's not been put together yet, but, you know, it will be.
Mr. President, now, the Planning Commission did conduct its, the public hearing on this at its last meeting, and there was no public input at that time. However, since that meeting, I have received a letter from a constituent who was unable to speak at that, at that public hearing, and the constituent does strongly urge the city to, in the constituent's word, shut down the operation. In more specifically, and to the point here, this constituent believes we should, that the city should continue under our current ordinance rather than adopt the state standards. The constituent outlined a number of other problems in addition to noise, along the lines of vibrations and time of operations and dust and the explosions. And the constituent is considering bringing, on his own, on this constituent's own behalf, a public nuisance complaint within the civil court system. So I think that's something that we should be aware of. The person who did send me the letter did not authorize it to be made part of the public record, but I just felt it was necessary to, you know, summarize those complaints. I know that we've had other complaints and perhaps at the next, at the next meeting when we vote, we can, we'll have a further discussion of this, but not everybody is satisfied with the, with the approach that we're, that the city is taking, so.
Anything else?
There was only one person in my ward that referenced the easing of the other standards was something that shouldn't really be necessary when you have, i.e., the history and the background that seems to be out there.
Okay, we got the reading. Item 6E, consider resolution accepting donations offered to the city park and rec department?
I'll offer the resolution and not waive the reading. Because I want to read the reading.
Let's read it.
Following donations for the dog park development, 4,562 from the cheese, wine, and beer auction event. There was, just for the record, about $750 in bills that had to be paid out of that, so actually reduces it by that amount. $1,000 from Barbara Haroldson, up to $1,000 for Pergola Construction from Comcast Care Day on April 26, 663, and 25 cents from Pups Playland for their yappy hours. I went to one of them, that was interesting. $330.04 from the dog committee at the Civic Center Garage Sale, $108.35 from the dog committee at the home show, $50 from Shannon Kubels, $40 from Robert and Cheryl Boyzman honoring Andy Dolly's birthday, is my understanding, $25 from Aaron Boyzman Nelson honoring Andy Dolly's birthday, $20 from Doug Boyzman, and $20 from Ken Emmerich. I'm going to wait for a second.
A second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second offer of the resolution and waive the reading, but we didn't.
We didn't waive the reading this time.
Go ahead.
Just a brief comment, you know, there was about two years ago is when a small group, a handful of people came to Park and Rec and then came to the city council and said, "We want a dog park," and both the Park and Rec and the council said, "Yep, you can have one, we'll find you a location, but you guys raised the money." And about, I would guess, 200 to 300 people in this community have donated money, whether it's been attending the wine and beer tasting events, whether it's been at these Pups Playland or the garage sales or the building, the Pergolas that we did a couple weeks ago, all the other dog walk events we had last year. We've now raised over $15,000 for this project, and I'm very pleased to tell you tonight that the fence has been approved and is going to be installed in the next, I always hate to say "times," 2 to 3 weeks or so is what we're kind of hearing from Park and Rec. So the project will be complete. We still have some other things to do with, potentially with lighting and water, and we've got signs on order that are coming, and we need to figure out what to do with the poop yet, but it's been a really active group of citizens that have really just made this happen, and they, so I applaud them. They just took this on very seriously from day one and made it work for our community, so my hats off to them.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
And there's more donations coming, by the way.
Okay. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Mayor, you'll be busy.
Yes.
Item 6F, consider a motion approving the increase in hourly wage paid to the election judges.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion?
Eight dollars and 75 cents an hour for working as an election judge? My request would be with any consideration to raising their wage to $9.50 an hour right away.
And not have to bring it back in another year?
Well, and just an acknowledgement that, you know, for the work that they do and...
What was the basis for going from 8 to 8.75? What are the criteria that we use to look at the, that increase?
President Schmitz and councilors, basically in the past, we've had a 75 cent premium or, yeah, a differential in between just a, just an election judge and the head and the assistant judges there, so we just kept it at the 75 cents between the two.
The current wages are what, Rich?
750 and 825, I believe.
Okay. So we're, what we're doing is reacting to the law that will go into effect on August 1st that says the minimum wage will be $8 or greater. And so we're just jumping ahead, because on August 1st, that's what, this is what we would have to do, and I don't think there's any, you know, requirement that we couldn't go more, we just can't go less.
Right.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, the people that are guarding our electoral system are working for minimum wage, you know, I just, this is, you know, this is, this, there's something wrong here, you know?
We could try it for a year if we don't get, a lot of people, we can adjust it for next year.
Well, I, I think people do it because they love to do it, and they'd probably do it for nothing, it's just a sign of honor and respect, but...
We will have to adjust it next year also, because August 1st, the minimum wage goes up to 950, so if you include the 75 cent differential, so somebody's going to be at 10, you know, 10 and a quarter.
10.25, yeah.
Well, I guess, I, you know, from a budgetary point of view, I would, I would ask, ask that when we look at this next year, we could at least consider a wage increase to better reflect the importance of the work that these people do.
What other communities do we ever check?
We have checked in the past, and we've kind of been in the ballpark, but maybe a little bit low.
Okay. Let's see, do we have a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, any more discussion? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 6D, consider a resolution accepting donations from the Heartbeat Back Heart of New Ulm Project.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept a donation of $1,350 for the Heartbeat Back Heart of New Ulm Project to fund expenses to send Counselor Webster to the Pro Walk, Pro Bike, Pro Place Conference in Pittsburgh on September 8th to the 11th of this year.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second? Any more discussion?
Well, I would just say that there's a small group of people who want safe streets and a small group of people who want an environment which allows an active lifestyle, and, you know, they're working hard to try to make this happen, and if somebody else wants to go, that's fine, but I'm, I'm on that group and I'm happy to go, and we have Ms. Winters here, she's, give us a little pitch.
We've been waiting the whole meeting.
We're waiting the whole meeting. Waiting the whole meeting.
A lot of patience.
I'm Cindy Winters with the Heart of New Ulm Project. This conference is offered every other year, and it is the 18th Annual Conference, and it's put on by the National Center for Bicycle and Walking, and they have over 100 different sessions that they provide. And this year, there will be four different tracks at the conference, and those tracks are the Change, Connect, Prosper, and Sustain tracks, and each track reflects a stage that a community moves through as it, as it works to progress towards the ideal of becoming a place where all people, where people of all ages and abilities can walk and bike through the community. So this provides an opportunity for someone else other than Heart of New Ulm staff. I have been to this conference twice to attend and learn more about how to make these changes and to talk to other individuals across the country on how they've done it within their communities and what the projects can look, because every project looks different in different communities. So it's an opportunity to talk to others, to find out how the work can be done, and just to get other ideas as well.
And I would guess, as I go to some of these national, not this particular one, but on different topics, usually you can find maybe some potential grants or some networking with people that...
Exactly.
To get better prices on certain things and...
Right, and to really think about planning ahead, because we, making the city more walkable and bikeable and the streets safer. I don't want to impact the city budget, but how do you work with the city and the street departments to make the changes while there are being changes made to the streets? And how do you, what processes need to be in place to allow that to happen?
Maybe Mr. Kayler and Mr. Curry should be going too.
It could be dr...
Get some more grant money out there.
Oh, that next year.
Next year.
Next year.
Who else is going from New Ulm, may I ask?
I'm looking for someone else from the county to go as well. I haven't been able to identify that person. We did ask Joe if he wanted to go from the Engineers Department, but he said no because it's during the construction period, and, yeah, he declined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll help me decide which track to go on. I'm signing up tomorrow.
Yes. Okay, I will help with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See and none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid in amount of $976,608.34.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on any? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item 7B, consider approval of a list of claims to be paid in amount of $250,687.09.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? See and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. But no more business to be concluded. Meeting adjourned.